First item on the agenda is this situation where we, this tunnel idea for the freeway. In the past couple of months, I think you've heard rumors about it, you've seen articles, the papers about it, there's been a few meetings about it scattered around. And tonight, Assemblyman, Assemblywoman Carol Lou and Assemblywoman Roger Snobel, the CEO of Metropolitan Transportation Authority, the MTA, and Mark Pisano, the Executive Director of Southern California Association of Governments, commonly known as SCAG, are here to present that idea to the community and then we'll take public comment on it and what the council will do with it, I'll find out, I guess, what kind of response we'll have to that. So I guess whoever's first among the three.
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening, community members of South Pasadena. My, I want to thank you very much for allowing me to speak and to address you on this particular issue, so I don't want to take a lot of your time, I know your agenda is very long. As all of you know, I've been a longstanding opponent of the 710 freeway and I have always shared concerns about the excessive impacts on housing and air quality, noise and quality of life issues. But recently, I was approached by Mr. Roger Snobel of the MTA and Mark Pisano of SCAG with the concept of a tunnel as a substitute for the current cut and cover proposed proposal to complete that freeway. As conceptualized, the tunnel would avoid the impacts of construction delays, residential displacement, housing reductions, and other environmental impacts that have concerned this community and all of us for so very long. My objective in meeting with you tonight is to introduce these gentlemen to describe their concept to you. It is my belief that the feasibility of the tunnel can only be explored and determined through a process that includes everyone who has interest in the topic so that all the relevant issues and concerns are put on the table and examined. If we begin this process now, then the issues would have been addressed and the feasibility of the tunnel thoroughly explored by the time, four or five years from now, the economy is perhaps back on track and we can start thinking about major infrastructure improvements and priorities again. I hope South Pasadena has heard, or will hear, what these gentlemen, I hope you will hear very carefully what these gentlemen have to say, and would agree to participate in the further exploration of this concept. It means no obligation to you, but I appreciate your time to allow us to present this to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Knapp, members of the City Council, constituents and citizens of South Pasadena, my name is Mark Pisano. I'm the Executive Director of the Southern California Association of Governments. I've been in this position now for 26 years. When I first arrived in, on the job, one of the first items that my board, which is now a board of 76 elected officials with representatives throughout the regions, one of our first actions was to re-adopt the regional transportation plan, which were charged as the metropolitan planning organization to develop. And all projects in that plan, in the region, need to be in that plan, and furthermore, we need to make findings that what we're doing in transportation will meet our quality objectives and furthermore, our growth and development objectives in the region. Needless to say, the 710 freeway, which has been a project in that plan, has been an item of discussion, controversy, lawsuits, and difficulties in implementation the entire 26 years that I have been in my position. Every three years, we review and revise that transportation plan. And every three years, we evaluate whether or not the project is needed, the importance of the project, its contribution to air quality, and how it supports the growth and development patterns within the region. The project, and I'm speaking now as a regional staff member, the project is important to the region. Every single evaluation that we've done has reinforced the need for the project, given the regional implications of transportation. When the record of decision was finalized on the EIS several years ago, one of the directives that we received as an organization was to do a detailed evaluation of that project to ascertain whether or not it has continued to be needed. We started that process about nine months ago. When we go through and review the transportation plan, we assess what changes in technology, what changes are occurring in the region that might lead to alterations in the plan. One of the issues that was put on the table as we went through the current revision was the changing technologies that have occurred in the field of tunnel construction, and these changes have been pioneered primarily by European interests. And there's a number of projects, and it started with a tunnel that linked London, excuse me, England with France, and then there were a number of other projects in other countries, in the Netherlands, as well as in France, particularly in Paris, where in urban environments, tunneling is being used as an alternative to deal with similar problems that we're confronting in this particular project. And furthermore, enormous advancements have been made in the construction techniques and approaches to enable a significant reduction in cost and greater efficiencies in moving this technology. As a result, my staff's review of this particular project led me to believe that tunneling may very well be a concept whose time may have come as it relates to this project. And I relayed that observation to our partner in the transportation investment program in LA County, MTA, and the person of Roger Snobel. And I related to Roger that it may be possible and feasible and economically viable to look at tunneling as an alternative. And Roger will speak, Roger Snobel will speak more to his own evaluation, so I'll let him speak to that. But let me, let me just note two other observations that we are looking at relative to this project. Every 10 years, we also do an update of who makes what trips, from where, to where, and how are the trips being made. And in technical terms, that's called origin and destination information. In the year 2000 and 2001, we conducted a new origin and destination study so that we'll have current trip-making patterns in this corridor, which can be used to evaluate the project. We are now looking at, using the new O and D, origin and destination study, we're now going through a re-evaluation of trip-making patterns within the region, and that information likewise will be made available to you and to the region over the next year. And the time period for revising the transportation plan is June 30th of the year 2004. Let me just conclude by stating, the project has been important in the past, not only for transportation, it's also been important for air quality because of the bottlenecks that have occurred in the transportation system in this portion of the region. And that information, that analysis is part of this air quality consistency conformity evaluation that we make. Finally, in the area of funding, funding for the transportation plan and for this project, there's been one option available to the region that we've not been able to ever access ourselves to, and that is if there is agreement within the community, it's conceivable that we could in fact bring this project to the federal government and obtain a larger share funding for this project. In the past, interstate completions, and this is one, have generally been at an 80% level and the locals have paid 20%. We've never been able to make that particular argument because we've never had any degree of unanimity, or if not unanimity, there has been conflict as we move forward on this project. Let me conclude my remarks with the observation that this is an idea, and it's an idea that has not been formalized, it's an idea that we will not move forward as a region, and I'm sure I won't speak for the MTA, but they will not move forward on nor Caltrans if the community is not willing to work with us to move it forward. But it may be an idea that if we can work together, that we can resolve a lot of the issues, both on the transportation side, the air quality side, but most importantly, on the community impact. And with that, let me turn it over to Roger Snobel, who will present to you his position and his analysis on the project.
Mayor, Mayor members of council, thank you very much for having us here, and I'd also like to thank Assemblymember Lou for arranging for this, because it's been a project that we've just been talking about, it's not a proposal that anybody's making, it's just an idea. And what my role in it has been simply that Caltrans came to me early after I got here, I've only been in the Los Angeles area for a little over a year, and I've heard a lot about the 710. And there's a lot to hear about the 710, and I've heard a lot about it. But Caltrans asked me to take a look at it because they wanted to be able to do something with it, they were not happy with being a landlord, they don't think they're a particularly good landlord, and they wanted to either get going or do something with it to move out of that kind of a business. And of course, SCAG has a very large concern because we have to meet our quality standards if we're going to continue to receive any kind of money from the federal government. And MTA certainly has an interest because we're looking at regional transportation throughout the county to make sure that people have the ability to move and to move freely because that's an important element of our quality of life. What I was asked to do is take a look at the feasibility of some other alternatives on the 710. We have tunnel experts, we've built tunnels in the past, some of them are infamous, some of them have gone very well. I don't know if everybody knows it, but there's two about 11-mile tunnels being built right now by the City of Los Angeles on a big sewer project using the same kind of technology that we have proposed on this. And shortly, we're going to start construction of our three-mile light rail tunnel on the east line in the east Los Angeles. So there already is a lot of tunneling experience that has happened in this area, and I have tunnel experts on my staff who advise me on tunnels, and these people are people who advise tunnel construction all over the world. In fact, the, one individual has about eight current tunnels going on in Europe right now that they're working on. Of course, in Europe, this is looked at more and more often. Just last week, I was in Prague, Czech Republic, and had the opportunity to visit a tunnel that's under construction there, very similar type of thing, different kind of construction method, but a very large highway tunnel, under very sensitive, very old buildings that, of course, they couldn't have any kind of subsidence on at all because it would damage centuries-old buildings, and they couldn't have that. This project's almost completed, it's quite, quite interesting, and it's, there are many, many of these kinds of projects going on right now in Europe. The technology has advanced tremendously in the last 10 years. And the, the first thing I ask our tunnel consultants to do is to take a look at the alignment. I had had the building supervisor Antonovich flew me up over the corridor in a helicopter so we could really see, get a good feel for it, and of course, I've been on the ground looking at it. So the first thing I did with the tunnel people is asked, take a look at the geology, see what kinds of situations there would be, if there are any showstoppers in the geology of it. They looked at it quite extensively, there's already been a lot of geological work done in the corridor, and they came back and said there are no showstoppers, the geology is considered soft earth, boring, it's not solid rock, there's certainly rock in there, but it's not solid, and that there is no groundwater issues, there is one earthquake fault, and they feel that can be mitigated from, if there was an earthquake right at that fault, there would be, of course, damage at that position, but they could construct the tunnel such that that damage could be repaired very easily and very quickly. So there was really no reason that they, we couldn't do a bored tunnel in this particular area. So then they started looking at it to see how it might look, and can we pass out, we'll pass out a little, this is supposed to be on a napkin, by the way, because this is really this native, this kind of a situation, it's really a napkin drawing, and it's just an idea, and that's, we were trying to print out a napkin, but we couldn't get the napkins to go through the Xerox machine, so it's on, it's on paper. But at any rate, it just, the, our engineers looked at it and came up with a configuration that could work. It would be two twin-running tunnels. Nowadays, the technology is such that you always want two tunnels, and that's a safety feature because there's cross passages every so many feet that are there, because if there's a problem in one tunnel, then you have the ability to go to the other tunnel where you would have the safe haven, and you would be able to exit if there were something like a fire in the tunnel. So that, that, the twin tunnels are, the way that these are built now, and it's a safety feature, and they're pretty much always parallel, not changing elevations, but same elevations for that safety reason. They'd be 55 feet in diameter, which is probably the biggest that we can, we can drill with the, with a boring machine. That would accommodate two main lanes and a, and a high occupancy vehicle lane plus shoulder, and the shoulder is another safety aspect that we think is an important aspect of the, of the arrangement. The boring technology is what we call a closed-faced earth pressure balance machine, that's technical stuff, but basically, as the machine goes through and bores, there's a big shield, and the slider is built inside that shield, so as the boring machine advances, the soil is never exposed to the tunnel itself, it's always encapsulated already. And so it's, there's no water seepage, there's no gas seepage, or any kind of things like that. In fact, the people inside the tunnel never really touch the soil, it's just the face of the boring machine that touches the soil. And this is the best method from making sure there's no subsidence because there's never an opportunity for anything more than an inch of subsidence to happen, and that would be grounded very quickly. So it's a slow method, but at least it's a, it's a very safe, very doable, and very economic method to go, go and do. So when they came back and said that they could really do this, they could do it in the same range as cost that the cut and cover would be in today's dollars, we thought, well, gee, there may be some, some sense to this because it would save the properties that would otherwise have to be taken with the cut and cover, and it's 1,400 or some, some number like that of existing, and some of those are historic properties that would not have to be destroyed in order to still facilitate the roadway. It would be able to complete the 710 gap closure, which is an important regional transportation improvement, and of course, has a lot of support for completing, and it would be about in the same cost range. And I think that's really an important aspect, is it, it may be a little bit more expensive, but not terribly more expensive because of the, of the geometrics we have to work with in the area, in the geography we already have to work with anyhow. It would be in about the same cost arrangement. With the addition that Mark mentioned, that if we were to be able to go forward with doing something like this, we would certainly ask for it to be put back as an interstate highway again, and then we would go and ask for interstate money, which is 80% money, which would be, this would, this isn't the last gap, it's real close to the last gap in the entire interstate system. So we think we have good, good ability to go after interstate money on it. And so we started talking to people to see if they thought that this had any kind of merit at all, and if it would be something that would be considered. And I know there's been past looks at tunnels. There's also another tunnel expert that's been hired to take a look at this, and our tunnel experts have gotten together, and they, they pretty much agree, there's different configurations, and of course, this is just a napkin drawing, there could be several other different configurations as well. But I think the main point is, it is a feasible type of process today, it's a feasible type of a, of a project with today's technology. And so we, we thought we should probably talk to some people and see if it was something that we were just out of our minds in proposing, and if we are, then, then fine, you know, we'll forget it. But I think Caltrans, and Bill Reagan was here from Caltrans, and SCAG and MTA kind of believe that if we don't give our best shot at at least exploring all the options, then we're not doing our job. And we think this does have some merit, and we'd like to continue to, to have serious conversations with people and see if we can come together to, to see if there aren't some kinds of agreements to continue exploring this option, or just to forget it and go back to what we've been doing. So that's basically it. It's, it's not a proposal, we're not making it as a proposal. If everybody get together and say, yeah, this is a good thing, let's keep working on it, then I think we, I'll be willing to do that, but if, if there's reasons that people just say, no, it doesn't work, then we'll just go back with another project, so.
Can I ask a question? I guess, exactly what, why, what are you asking from the city of South Pasadena? And I guess, what are you not asking from the other cities involved, or why us? I mean, you really don't need, technically, you don't need our permission to do anything, so I was just curious what the exact purpose is.
Well, actually, I guess we're just, we're just asking is, do you think we're just out of our minds, and should we just stop talking about it, or is it something that has interest to continue to look at and talk about, and see if we can't develop some consensus in the region that this might be a way to, to solve, solve a problem and get something done without doing the kind of harm that the, the other approach would do? So we're not really looking, we're not asking you for, for support like that, because we don't have that much information, but I guess what we're, what we're saying is if this just doesn't have any chance, then why waste our time and energy on it? And you could tell us that, and, you know, we'll go back and continue the old process and work on other projects.
Are we the first stop for the train? Have the other cities weighed in on it in particular? Have you heard anything from Alhambur?
This is the first public meeting we've had on it. We've just been talking to people, and in talking to Assemblywoman Lou, she said, well, this is something we ought to think about, but we need to do more than just, you know, talk in private meetings, we need to, to start talking to the South Pasadena group. So this is the first public meeting we've had on it. This is the, the first stop because I think you have a big stake in the issue, and if you're, you know, if you're willing to listen to it, or talk to it, or continue, then fine. If you're not, then we haven't, we haven't answered. That's sort of the way we're looking at it.
Any other questions from council members?
Mark did have some other questions, and one of the concerns is the process during construction for this kind of construction. And the disruption that happens is very localized in the tunnel because it's underground. For the most part, nobody would ever know at the surface that anything was happening underground. There would be no blasting in this, for example. It would just be a continuous process. At the portal, there is trucks because it's a, it's a process where we, we use a liquid to take out the spoil, and then we reprocess it at the portal and put it into trucks, and the trucks take it off, and we sell it to contractors, it's very valuable to contract. So there, there would be traffic, truck traffic at the portals, at the ends, but through the rest of the, the operation, there would be virtually no recognition of it. The tunnels that are being done in Los Angeles, nobody knows about because they're happening 80 feet underground.
Roger, all this, again, the idea and concept is very preliminary. Some issues I've talked about, certain residents are, what about during this 4.5-mile segment, what about ventilation? I mean, there's a lot of car fumes and exhaust. Will there be some huge smoke stacks built in cities, or what's the current technology with regard to exhausts?
Well, the, there would, there would have to be some ventilation. One of the advantages of a tunnel nowadays is that the exhaust that's submitted in a tunnel would be scrubbed before it is let out to the atmosphere, so you have zero emission happening inside the tunnel, which is another advantage, because that's the way it would be happening now. There would be some, some ventilation shafts. They don't, like in Prague in the subway, which was built by the communists back, you know, many years ago, they have these big ugly towers, they tried to make them pretty, but they're big ugly towers. Nowadays, you do them flush with, in a streetscape, or you do them on the side of the hill or something like that. It doesn't have to be right on top of, of the road bed, you can, you can take it off-site. And so we'd be very sensitive of that. In a tunnel like this, you'd have two or three of them, we think, but we would be very careful about where they were placed and what they would look like, and what they would do. The other issue with them is that there could be noise because as the fans and everything work, so you don't want it to be someplace where there might be a little bit of noise sensitivity. So you'd have to, I mean, we have to work on that, we have done, done anything like that yet.
One other item on the ventilation that Roger's technical staff raised, and my staff concurred, and that is, it's also possible to collect the remaining gas within the tunnel, at the ventilation point, add scrubbers, and actually get additional air quality mitigation that we would have normally have gotten in a tunnel environment. And just one other observation, and that is, we would attempt to use public right-of-way for the right-of-way on the tunnel for a number of reasons, one being you can ventilate. Second, we would minimize any ground rights and the acquisition of ground rights by doing that. But the, the air quality, by, by being smart on the air quality, we can, we can, and given the approaches that we're taking, we can actually get more gains than we heretofore thought we could, which is increasingly becoming important as we move forward and try to keep our air quality entertainment.
May I ask, in your explorations of this concept, have you considered at all how many, if any, ramps, on-ramps and off-ramps you'd have for this tunnel?
That's one of the questions.
And where they'd be located?
Yeah, one of the questions that has come up is where we, where we'd have interchanges at. Obviously, at both ends, we'd have portals and they would feed in. And at Huntington, the original plan showed an interchange at Huntington, a cloverleaf. That, that has been pointed out to us has some problems because to create that, that would have to be a cut-and-cover section, and it would be very broad and would, could affect some historical homes. And so we're taking a look at that now, to the extent that we can, because we could not do a cloverleaf, we could do a good old Texas triangle, and minimize the amount of land. And the other thing that we're looking at is, do we even need that Huntington ramp? You know, the exit. So there's, I don't have, that's the only other, or other set of interchanges that you would need, I think.
The original 710 proposal prohibited trucks on the, on the gap closure portion. Does the tunnel, do you anticipate allowing trucks to use if the tunnel did materialize? Would trucks be allowed back on it then, or is that back up in the air?
No, the, well, I mean, the, the original plans have no trucks, we would, we would concur with that. Now, we are in the midst, and our, one of our board committees heard the proposal on the, on the southern portion of the 710, that does have truck involvement, and we're looking at truck lanes and that sort of thing. If it was desirable to continue further for trucks, then we would look at a different tunnel for trucks. But what this contemplates is two, two running tunnels, no trucks other than local trucks. I think you still could allow local trucks if there's an interchange there, but no food truck.
Thank you.
Do I have public comment? Do you have something else, Mark?
No, I just wanted to, again, thank the council for allowing us just to come forth today and speculate with you. I also want to thank Assemblymember Lou, who was one of our 76 members, who did raise at every meeting the issues and concerns of your community. I want to thank her for enabling this idea to come forward, and I just want to echo Roger's comments. I hope that we can continue forward, not just speculating, but working together on this.
Okay. I'm going to have a public comment, and I have to really, really keep you to three minutes apiece tonight. We'll be here all night as it is, and so if you please honor that time limit, and please state your name and address and give your slip, may fill out one of those slips and give it to the city clerk, please.
I'd like to be brief on this. I want to compliment Assemblywoman Lou on this proposal. And of course, it's a five-to-10-year project, and therefore, you have to have an interim approach. Boston just recently completed a tunnel that took almost 20 years to get across to the public, and they, as a result, went under the river and did something of the same nature to relieve the congestion of traffic, which we have 34,000 to 35,000 vehicles a day now, which will probably increase 20% within the next five to 10 years. I would like to recommend that they consider the interim approach, and legislative-wise, because the assi- because the Assemblywoman is in a position to introduce this type of legislation very quickly. Carpooling should be encouraged, and the carpool owner should get a tax credit. Those who use the carpool for that purpose in that car also will get a tax credit. The carpool owner would get a depreciation of four years to write off the vehicle, and those who use it will get a tax credit. Senior citizens between 10 and 2 could use public transportation free, just like they do in Sweden. Users of carpools can credit their transportation costs against their income tax. MTA can do a reduced fare for seniors. Senior fare, and I just came from New York City, I flew in last night to attend this meeting, they have a pass for seniors, a dollar and a half round trip, you can't buy a one-way ticket. They also have a monthly pass for buses. And then I'd like to emphasize, Mexico City has the same problem we have here. So what do they have? Instead of MTA buses that run every half hour, an hour, they have private people owning small jitneys, eight and 10 passenger. We have an unemployment problem. We can retrain the people and ask them to use jitneys along Fair Oaks, Fremont, to Alhambra, to all the surrounding cities, and alleviate the carloads that we have. I think that is an interim approach. I compliment the Assemblywoman for her thoughtfulness in bringing this up. I think it has a lot of merit.
Did you fill out a slip? That was Robert Wagner, by the way. I don't think he introduced himself.
Ernest Arnold, 1502 Fremont Avenue. I'm here representing Citizens United to save South Pasadena. That's the grassroots organization that actually broke off from the Westley Route back in the mid-'80s to propose a no-build solution for the current problem with the 710 freeway. We have distributed a letter to the city council, and I won't read it, but I will make it available to people who would like to have one. The key issue we have and concern we have is that Caltrans, the MTA, the Federal Highway Administration, over the history of this project since 1960, has a record of deceit, dealing in bad faith, bait and switch. So we come very skeptical to the table. First, Caltrans said the Westley Route could not be built. We designed a freeway, designed, Des Reynolds did, in 1970, you had to state that, yes, it could be built. Frank Lattimer told Caltrans, Bud Collier, our Assemblyman, said Frank was up there, he told Caltrans, tell South Pasadena, we'll give them anything they want. Get them to sign the agreement. I'll kill it in appropriations. Then, we have the mitigation conferences, South Pasadena in 1990. They were told, we said we could accept and participate only if we did not have to participate in designing a freeway we did not want. We were assured that all alternatives would be on the table. It was a lie. The panel was stacked the first day, rules were changed, and South Pasadena found itself designing stonework, type of flowers to have, the footprint of a freeway that we didn't want built. And then it's been used against us that we had our chance. Gentlemen, I don't have a problem with a tunnel. I have a problem with deceit. I have a problem with bait and switch. Take the freeway off the table, void the Record of Decision, withdraw the EIR, have the California Transportation Commission void its adoption of the Meridian Route. Start with a clean slate, and then let's start honestly. Thank you.
I am Bob Seif. I live at 414 Fairview Avenue. Mr. Snoble, I'd like to address my remarks to you. I worked for 25 years for a company called the Beckel Corporation, headquartered in San Francisco. Our company built the tunnel that you were talking about between France and Great Britain. It also built the tunnels for Bard. So I know from personal experience that tunnels can be built. But that is not the problem, Mr. Snoble, the technology or that tunnel. We here in our little city, and you see they are packed here to the gills, hundreds of people are probably standing outside watching on television. We are schizophrenic. First of all, something you probably haven't been told yet, we, the citizens of South Pasadena, have lost their 14th Amendment rights to bargain with Caltrans. Please have somebody on your staff explain to you the meaning of the Martinez Bill, which shackles our city council and our citizens from dealing with the Federal Highway Administration or with Caltrans. That is the fundamental problem that you will encounter here. Now, since we are, now I'm asking you three very short questions, and you don't have to answer them because others will tell you the same thing. Since we are so shackled, we have no rights at all, why do you and Mr. Pisano, Pisano, excuse me, my English isn't too good, as you can recognize, need any kind of permission from us? We have no right to say yes or no to you. Absolutely none. Ask your lawyers about the Martinez Bill. Now, I'd like to know, are there any representatives of Caltrans or the Federal Highway Administration here? Are you, will you drop the lawsuit that we are? Will you drop the-
Mr. Seif, I think I can answer those, ask those questions, okay?
Well, are you going to drop the decision, the rod, on the Federal Highway Administration? Are we going to be relieved of our loss of money? Every month, the city council has to write checks to fight our lawsuits? Is that going to be stopped? And then, what has Caltrans and the Federal Highway Administration told you? Have they said, yes, that's fine? If the citizens of South Pasadena are accepting the tunnel project, then we will forget about the now adopted freeway route? And by the way, on our agenda, I don't know from who wrote that agenda-
Two, three minutes, all right.
It talks about a tunnel and lure the 710 freeway. The tunnel will be the 710 freeway.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, honored guests, neighbors, vecinos. My name is Don Justin Jones, and I have been a member of the Design Advisory Group created by the Record of Decision that Mr. Pisano talked about. I've also been a plaintiff in a lawsuit against Caltrans and the Federal Highway supposed in the 710 because of the unequal impacts in the minority community of El Cideno. But I'm here as your neighbor, a neighbor that lives up the street, and I'd like to voice my concerns with issues you hear. First of all, as Bob said, you need to develop a sense of confidence in our communities. You need to have some events to trigger those confidence. If you've been at this for 24 years, Mr. Pisano, people in this audience have been in it for 45 years and even longer. This has been a fight that has left bodies scattered left and right. You bear the burden to build confidence in this community. Let me give you some ideas of how I think you can do that. First of all, the state must be unambiguous in its expression that the 710 on the surface is dead, that this is not, as has been alluded to, a bait and switch, that you will not put lipstick on a corpse if the tunnel does not prove to be feasible. The 710 must be taken off the table as is presently envisioned. Number two, we must have immediate sales of footprint properties in the affected communities to make sure that once the decision is made, that you cannot reunite the board. We must have nails to split the boards. That means that you must sell affected properties in El Cideno, South Pasadena, and Pasadena. The issue of fair market rent for the sale of these properties cannot be used to build this facility on the back of the tenants. You cannot hunt for that missing 20% on the back of people that have been paying rent in this community and receiving substandard treatment for years. Third, or fourth, we must have a dedication of land that is surplus for public benefit, i.e. parks, in all three cities. If you're interested, I can show you at least 30 acres of open and available land that's under Caltrans's suisancy now, that I think could be better used for recreational facilities. And I'm sure Mike would agree with me on that. The last several points off, you must withdraw the Record of Decision application, and it must be declared null and void and not resuscitated. There must be no Roberti Bill modifications that will disenfranchise the tenants of their expectancy, even though it has not vested yet. There must be statements, therefore, that the freeway, as it is envisioned presently, is dead. These statements must come from people at the highest levels in this state government. There must be a minimum of community disruption for ingress and egress. We ask that there be a judicial review of the compromise, that Judge Pragerson be asked to appoint a special master to make sure that these agreements, if there are some that come from this dialogue, that they be implemented. And last, our community must have a seat at the table of, if, in fact, there is a direct construction authority, we must be involved in it from the Alpha to the Omega. I hope that I haven't been too strident in my comments to you, but I've been in this room before, and I know that we must go forward, either with you or against you. Thank you very much.
Mayor, members of the council, representatives of Caltrans, my name is Moctezuma Esparza. I'm the former honorary mayor of El Cideno. I have traveled to Sacramento with many of you to lobby for the passage of legislation that will empower our communities. Unfortunately, those efforts were not fruitful. I'm here today because I am concerned that in whatever happens, the partnership that we have started to build between the residents of El Cideno and South Pasadena and Pasadena not be sacrificed so that if there is a deal made, that there will be some sort of an interchange that sacrifices only homes in El Cideno. The preliminary drawings of this tunnel indicate the possibility of an interchange at Huntington and Kendall. In the historic area of El Cideno that was declared as a consequence of the research that was done by Caltrans in its environmental impact report, and currently, that interchange is right over that three-block area which was declared a historic district in El Cideno, in which there are three homes now in the National Historic Register, a wonderful community in El Cideno that, at least on the surface, the drawings indicate would be wiped out. It appears that only homes in El Cideno are slated to be wiped out. We, of course, are very concerned about that and hope that in our partnership in the future, you will not seek to forget us and that we will jointly find a solution for all of the residents that are affected. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tony Cottenacci. I live at 1220 Linden Street here in South Pasadena. And I guess I'd like to talk about the issue here that I don't think the issue is advances in tunnel technology. I think the question is, what are we going to do to meet the transportation needs of Los Angeles County in the future? And how do we spend our money that we have for that? And I'm concerned about this plan and how it would not really do that. Because if you look at it and you look at the statistics here, it doesn't really ease traffic congestion. It cites a 13% increase in the average speed, and everyone who's been on the freeway going 24 miles an hour knows what that's like. And the projections are that the speeds are going to go down to about 18 miles per hour, which means even with a 3% mile-per-hour increase, we're still going 20 miles per hour. So a freeway is not going to solve our traffic congestion problems and meet our transportation needs. I think if we're going to look at spending a billion dollars here on something, we should do it on something that's going to provide an alternative to people other than being in their cars, and that's light rail. I think the best way we could spend a billion dollars is to work together to see that we get the Gold Line extended out to Claremont, that we get the funding for those 50 rail cars that the governor's cut out of the current budget for the extension of the Gold Line to the east side, and really provide an alternative. Because people riding in trains don't generate air pollution like cars do. And I think we should really take a look at that. And I think we also need to just apply some common sense. I'm looking at a four-and-a-half-mile tunnel with, I don't know how long the longest chunk is, but anybody who's been behind a car wreck on the freeway and can't get off, how do you get off a freeway that's in a tunnel? I don't know. I think the CHP would have grave concerns about how do you evacuate people when there's an emergency in a tunnel? And what does that mean when that emergency is underneath our homes here in South Pasadena? So I'd just like to throw that out, that I think we can spend our money better providing alternatives to people that don't pollute, that cut traffic congestion by reducing the number of cars on the road, and that improves the quality of life and provides options for people. Thank you.
Good evening, council members, MTA, Southern California Association, Carol Lou. My name is Marie, and I'm from El Cideno. I'm here tonight because I was informed by the LA Times article written today about this meeting regarding the tunnel as the 710 freeway extension plan. And these are my questions for Caltrans and anyone else who can answer them. Are the residents of El Cideno represented here tonight by Councilman Nick Pacheco? Or was any other official invited here tonight representing the city of Los Angeles? In reading the article, MTA met with Alhambra officials on Monday to give them a brief overview of the plan, has MTA given a brief overview to the city of Los Angeles? It's been written in the LA Times that city manager Sean Joyce is in part to legitimize the discussion of raising the possibility in a public forum, allowing South Pasadenaans to come to grip with it. Has Sean Joyce raised the possibility in a public forum, allowing El Cideno residents to come to grip with this plan? Do we matter, or do we even exist in your plans and decision, Caltrans? MTA would like to begin preliminary studies. Can someone please inform the public here tonight, when is it the city of Los Angeles going to take part in these plans for a possible tunnel? As a member of the LA 32 Neighborhood Council, I would like to take this information back to our community and make this a priority, to be involved with the possibility of a tunnel going underneath El Cideno. Or is this tunnel not going to go under El Cideno, but will our homes be affected being destroyed? The idea of a tunnel being built was, has been whispered about for months between cities. But what about El Cideno? Please let El Cideno in on the whispers. We hope that the final decisions are not made behind our backs and that no other city make decisions for communities that they know nothing about. And I have a message from a good friend of mine, Jesse Granados. Let me remind everyone here tonight that as long as the El Cideno lawsuit is in place, per Judge Pragan, as stated, that funds for the freeway will not happen until all three cities are treated fair and equally and justice for all. Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Knapp, members of the city council. My name is Dan Parkes. I live at 1210 Charles Street in Pasadena. Tonight, I am representing State Senator Gil Sadio, who does represent South Pasadena, Los Angeles, Alhambra, and maybe a little bit of other neighboring cities. Okay, excuse me. Senator Sadio believes that a drilled tunnel merits further consideration with full public input of all the involved communities. A cut-and-cover, unlike a cut-and-cover tunnel, a drilled tunnel will not seriously disrupt surface areas. And I realize that there should be mitigations that should be considered, such as Mr. Moctezuma Esparza announced. It will not take hundreds of houses like the existing proposal does, and it will preserve the integrity of the city of South Pasadena, as well as the other communities. And just from my experience in the MTA, which was been a few years ago, there is technology that does exist that has proven effective in subways, in drilling, and that's even been perfected. So I urge further study. The state senator supports it wholeheartedly. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Greg Carlson. I live at 1112 South Pasadena Avenue in Pasadena. And just a couple of comments in regards to the Roberti Bill, which I'm sure you're well aware of. I didn't get your name from Caltrans, the representative? Bill? Hi. Mr. Pragan, when we talk about building bridges in the three communities with these organizations, can we get a commitment from Caltrans that the Roberti Bill will not be changed, and that the houses, if they are sold, would be sold under the Roberti Bill as legally they are supposed to be sold at this point?
At least already.
Can we ask a question?
That's not a forum for that.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, just to make a comment, that the houses all fall under the Roberti Bill, and just that it's known or made aware that the houses are not supposed to be sold on the open market, as Don was saying, to make up possibly that twenty percent. So, just to let it be known that the houses should stay under the Roberti Bill, and it shouldn't be altered in any way to allow certain cities to buy them or individuals to buy them. Thank you.
Good evening, honorable members of the South Pasadena City Council. Assistant Member Carol Lou, Transportation Representative. My name is Henry Lo, and I'm here tonight on behalf of State Senator Gloria Romero. And we've been greeting from the Twenty-Fifth Senate District, which includes the communities of El Cerrano and the western and central San Gabriel Valles, many cities in the San Gabriel Valley which are affected by congestion of the seven-ten. And so, when we heard that there was going to be an idea discussed tonight by Mr. Snowball and Mr. Pisanow, and I do commend you as well as Assistant Member Lou for bringing this issue before all of us, and we had an interest in finding out more about this idea. And really, the only message we want to raise is that, no matter what idea is proposed or used to move forward, we ask that you remember that the environmental, financial, and social costs be shared evenly, and that one community does not bear the full brunt of any idea project, and that one community does not lose its stock of homes. And so, again, we commend Mr. Snowball, Mr. Pisanow for raising this idea, and we look forward to working with you in moving forward this idea and any other ideas. And again, you know, congestion is an important issue in the San Gabriel Valley, and, you know, we look forward to helping you to resolve some of these issues, and again, in a manner that is respectful of all residents, all stakeholders in this area. Thank you.
Good evening, honorable members. My name is Frank Cardenas. I live at 451 Prospect Circle here in South Pasadena. By way of full disclosure, I'm a former MTA employee. I left the agency a year and a half ago to start my own business here in town. I did leave before Mr. Snowball arrived. As you can tell, Roger and Mark, you've known this for many years, there is no love in this town for a freeway whatsoever, and with very good reasons for that. This town is special for a reason. People like myself, more recent arrivals, have come here for a reason. It's special. We want to keep it that way. Freeways don't work in this part of the country, not around here. But it also occurs to me, and I'm wondering if it does to some others here, that this may very well be, members of the council, a kind of a historic opportunity. This is not big, bad, bad Pasadena that's speaking here before you. This is not Alhambra speaking here before you. It's not Caltrans directly, and all of the problems that some of us have with previous dealings with that state agency. These are two governmental agencies who have finally realized that perhaps the only way to relieve congestion in this part of the county is to find something that moves people that is not a surface freeway. And so, suddenly, whereas it may not have been their first preference, and it is probably not any South Pasadena's first preference, perhaps the only way out for all of us is to recognize that we have something in common, and that is maybe we can arrive at common ground that is underground. Representative Lou and State Senator Sadio, who presumably is in a position to do something about the Roberti Bill if he wants to, it cannot be a lot of fun to be an incumbent who has to sit on this type of an issue that has been festering for over a quarter of a century. Surely, it's in an incumbent's best interest to have these types of fires put out at home. So presumably then, following that logic, Gil and Carol will have some interest in making peace at home, seeing if we can arrive at this common ground, and do what they need to do as our elected legislators to make sure that state impediments to a deal that could be struck on this council's terms could be established. I think you're in the driver's seat here. You've got two people who are coming hat in hand, representing their proud agencies, saying essentially, "That other idea may never work, but South Pasadena, you also know it could someday, could be." And as a South Pasadena, I'm concerned that someday, maybe not soon, but someday we could lose this fight. Maybe not myself, but my little boy is going to inherit a little town that I didn't move him into. It's going to be different. All that these two agencies are asking is to study the opportunity. And all this resident is asking is that you study the opportunity, because the day may come that we will rue the day that we didn't take this opportunity when we had it. Thanks very much.
Kathleen Callan Cottonachi, 1221 Linden. I'm a new resident of South Pasadena, having lived from New York, Chicago, New Orleans. I can't keep a job, but I'm here in South Pass. And I love the village feeling, the camaraderie, and that you can walk to places. And the Caltrans and the MTA people, I have to ask, why aren't we seeing ideas other than sharing rides with one another that are going to be effective public transportation issues, that we can get on a bus, get on a light rail, not have to bother the people in Pasadena because we'll just be walking around and spending our money, or paying a lot of money for parking? We won't have to do that. I would like to see something constructive about that, and especially, I have been caught in the Holland Tunnel, and it's not very much fun. I don't believe the tunnels are the answer. We need alternative fuel, transportation, public transportation, and I'll come to any meeting that you have to support that, rather than supporting a tunnel. And I just want to say I'm really glad to be here in South Pasadena. And don't forget, we're going to war. And we're going to war. A lot of the reasons are because of oil, and we've got to get over this, more traffic, more tunnels, more freeways. Thank you.
My name is Beatrice Eve. I live in South Pasadena. I'm going to cut my testimony very short. I want to ask the city council, please do not do anything whatsoever, to anything whatsoever, that treats El Cerrano differently than South Pasadena. It is immoral to do so, and this would make the Via Del Ray debacle look like a cakewalk, and rightly so. Then I got to say, it is no question, with all your technical stories, I know that we engineers, give us enough time and enough money, we can do anything. I want to ask, what happens, should these folks get, cobble somebody together, start this project, and now comes in the change orders, the cost overruns? Are our senators in the United States Senate going to bail us out and take the flak that Senator Kennedy is taking for bailing Boston out for their big dig? Now, remember, Boston is a major city of Massachusetts. What is this? Okay. That's all I really want to say. Thank you.
Yes, good evening. My name's David Margrave, 928 Buena Vista. The tunnel would probably go right under my house. I'm not so concerned with that, but what I am concerned with is traffic. And it was mentioned earlier that traffic that is building up, and there's a need for transportation called a tunnel or a freeway, for thirty years or so, I've been in opposition to any freeway at all, based that we don't need it. I cannot see a need for a freeway if we could just reduce some of the development that's going on in Pasadena that's going on in Los Angeles. Certainly, if we continue building in Pasadena, and we continue to build in Los Angeles, and they have to get back and forth, then South Pasadena will be forced to suffer. But I honestly believe that if we do our homework, and if MTA and Caltrans get together and actually build alternate, alternative methods of transportation, which we've been working on, the multimodal system, I think that's our answer. We do not need a freeway. We've never needed a freeway if we continue to build, which we are opposed to in South Pasadena. We would like to maintain our small community with forty-two percent single-family and forty-eight percent, or fifty-eight percent multifamily. We don't need a high-rise. We voted that down, of course, and you're well aware that this community wants to stay a bedroom community, and other people see us, and they would love to be like us, with the developers grab onto pieces of property and build high-rises and cause us trouble. And I'm bringing that to your attention, that the way around this is to reduce the massive development in the projects that are in Pasadena, reduce them in Los Angeles, and cut the spurs off. If we could remove, if we could remove the southbound spur, remove the northbound spur completely, eliminate it, that would end the transportation problems we have in South Pasadena and El Cerrano. I'm very concerned with the residents in El Cerrano. I do not want to ignore them. I am upset that they were not notified, they're not part of this group. They're as much, I was born there, and I was raised there. I moved to South Pasadena thirty years ago. So, I am very much a part of that community also. So, I bring that to your attention, that it's not only South Pasadena, it's not only Pasadena, it's not only El Cerrano, it's the whole group that we want to maintain on bedroom communities. Thank you.
Mayor Knapp, members of the council, and invited guests, and the South Pasadena Republic. My name is Raymond Dashner, thirty-four-year resident in the city of Pasadena. And in that time, I've had an extraordinary interest in this project, because when we first purchased our house, we were promised by the agent that within a short time, we would be able to drive onto an on-ramp and be in Los Angeles in seven minutes. The house is still there, it's in a charming neighborhood, and I'm still waiting. In the meantime, when I was a younger man, ten years ago, I wrote a letter, which today is on yellowed newsprint, and it was submitted to the South Pasadena Review for publishing, and they did it. The letter is before you. It is a focus on this specific issue. This letter says exactly what you are now saying tonight, ten years ago. I'm appalled and somewhat amazed that in the ten years that has passed, that this is the very first public forum on this subject. It's been an unusual occurrence, only because it has not been thought of by Caltrans as being the best solution to the city of South Pasadena's hostage situation. You've all been held hostage for forty years. You have no idea what's next. Your property values are fluctuating in an unknown region, only because the thought was that you may have to be displaced by a six-lane or eight-lane highway. My proposal goes back ten years, and the essence of it, I invite you to read, I'm not going to repeat it tonight. But within it, we simply say that the common solution to the problem of transit of vehicles north on the seven-ten freeway and south on the seven-ten freeway exists in the bottom-line situation. It is known as a tunnel. It does not disrupt property. You're all going to have your homes intact. The trees will not be removed. The decimation of the school district because of so many families which would have to move would be untouched, and so many aspects that are all positive for the citizens of South Pasadena and El Cerrano. My proposal is that there be no exit in El Cerrano. The intent of the link is firmly to connect the seven-ten stub at Valley with the seven-ten stub at California in Pasadena. That is the whole intent of the freeway. As laid out on the surface, there was no such exits and entrances planned. That means to me that this project should follow that same rule.
Mr. Dashner?
The people of South Pasadena?
Three minutes are up.
Thank you, sir. I would wrap it up by simply saying that I'm an advocate of your proposal, and I'm wholeheartedly behind the effort and the focus to disband the lawsuits and all of the in-paper processes should be done by an executive order of the governor of the state of California immediately. Thank you.
Mary Ann Prada, 1710 Ramona Avenue. I call this tunnel vision. In nineteen eighty and in nineteen ninety, the taxpayers of L.A. County voted to tax ourselves to bring mass transit and cleaner air to the region. Today, we have a few trains and cleaner air, but limited mobility. With fifteen freeways feeding into the L.A. downtown business district, L.A. is today the most congested city in the nation, and it's all our fault. The San Gabriel Valley is the most polluted region in the western hemisphere, second only to Mexico City, and that's all our fault. Mr. Pisanow said in the paper today, "The seven-ten freeway is the most significant bottleneck left in the Southern California region." Do you mean if we study the four-point-five-mile tunnel concept for twenty or thirty years, L.A. will cease to be the most congested city in the immediate future? Even Caltrans says this is not a transportation solution, but a political solution. They also have been saying for ten years, "We cannot build our way out of congestion," and you've heard that many, many times yourself. The solution to easing the gridlock is not to undertake this tunnel, but to actually build something in ten years, twenty-two miles to Claremont on the Gold Line, five-point-nine miles of rail to connect the east side, fifteen miles of rail to the west side to the ocean for six-oh-two million dollars. There's only one pot of money. If you throw it down a money pit tunnel, instead of investing in rail and buses, you will be squandering public money. And today's, and Saturday's L.A. Times has stated that because of the budget crisis in California, the budget eliminated one-point-six billion for highway and transit projects. We know that this project today that you say is going to cost one-point-five billion will probably double and triple. Okay. You state the tunnel cost would be approximately one-point-five, but in today's L.A. Times, Robert Poole Jr., with the recent foundation, said the Long Beach Freeway Tunnel was the subject of an informal feasibility study by the foundation five years ago, so we've been studying it for five years. They estimated the tunnel would cost two to three billion dollars. That's a far cry from one-point-five, and that's today. And they said they would be charging, if some expenses would be reimbursed by charging tolls. Now, who's going to pay the tolls? It's going to be the trucks. That's almost twice as much as the MTA in SCAG says it will cost today. Somebody is not telling the truth. But more importantly, to me, what will be the actual cost in the year twenty-thirty? Because that'll be different than one-point-five. If these decisions go forward, the city of South Pasadena will be paying our engineers and lawyers for thirty to forty years. Will Tony Ross can be able to make a long-term commitment, or anybody else with his institutional memory and environmental credentials? The city must maintain its neighborhood character. Tunnel will light the middle of town with vents. Property values will plummet where the tunnel and vents are located. Thank you very much.
Leonard Rush, 1115 Glendon Way, resident of South Pasadena. My main thing, I want to ask a question of the representatives from SCAG. I was curious if, in your recent discussions, the weight in the, I said, the justification of the freeway and the desire to pursue this alternative, the tunnelization, is partly due, or perhaps largely due, to the severe housing crisis and shortage that there is in Southern California? And you're starting to see more of a balance towards trying to deal with not eliminating a really large number of homes versus building of transportation solutions? I know that that's a difficult one to weigh out, and if, on the SCAG board, if you're, you know, moving more towards seriously looking at ways to preserve existing housing stock?
Senator's Republic, comment? Nope?
I have several comments.
I have several comments. Diana Stoney, South Pasadena. They, one thing is the limited size of your tunnel. We're constantly seeing you expand freeways, and now you have a very limited size to this tunnel and size of the freeway. And I don't know what you would do if you had to expand it. The other problems are that you referenced Europe. Well, there have been two very devastating fires in European highway tunnels. And what happens is that all the fuel acts literally like a blowtorch, and the fire becomes so intense that even in Switzerland, where the tunnel went through the Alps, through bedrock, it compromised bedrock. And I would hate to see any of our buildings on top of something where the tunnel becomes compromised. And I think that an accident is very probable. We see over five thousand big rig accidents in California a year. So this is a very probable thing. Again, I will reiterate that you do not need our permission, but when you ask us to give you the permission, you are trying to undermine our no-seven-ten stand because you are asking us to alter our position, officially alter our position. So if you want to do it, I guess you can, if you can find the money, because the state is billions of dollars in debt. But there's more concerns that I have, and they relate to the fact that suppose you decide to only tunnel under South Pasadena, then are we subjected to all the development that Alhambra wants to make along their end of the freeway? You know, they want to take all that housing in Emery Park and turn it into commercial zone, like an auto zone. And that would actually flood more traffic into the city than it would ever relieve because the traffic would be coming then from Huntington Drive and all the commercial development along the freeway. I think the people of El Surino have a very real concern. I work in El Surino. They have very bad representation, and I can tell you that from being there for over thirteen years. They, they do not get good representation. I have walked the streets of El Surino about this subject and had them say, stand firm, South Pasadena, because you're our only chance. So you see, when you're talking to us, you tend also have to consider El Surino. I think that, I just want to reiterate that the council does not need to change their position. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one last public comment from Dick Richards, former mayor and councilman. He's been back.
Thank you. My name is Amity Richards, and I reside at eighteen-oh-one Wayne Avenue in South Pasadena. Now, obviously, for the many years that we have been faced with this particular problem, it has a great magnitude and a great impact upon the city of South Pasadena. And I notice on our agenda that it says, receive, request, and entertain a motion. And I think it would be very imprudent for the council to make any kind of a motion that might give false hope to the, to this proposition, as I don't think there has been enough of public input for this. In most of the major problems that we face here in South Pasadena, we try to go to the public as much as we can. Now, I realize we have a good representation of the public here tonight, but this is just the first time it's really been brought to our attention. And I would think that before there was any kind of a motion that we would show us to be even in favor of this particular aspect, that we would have more public input and more public hearings in the future. And I would also like to mention the fact that in March, we'll be having a new election, and I think it might be improvident for this council to give any kind of an indication of what the city would want to do, since we may have either three or possibly two new members of the council. And I think it's a, something of this nature should not be done or decided upon by this present council, but should wait until we have the resolution of the new council, the new individuals who are running for council, so we can also, through the various forums that will be held, can get some sort of an input from them as to what they consider suitable for the city of South Pasadena and for the residents of South Pasadena. One other, a small item I want to make, I don't think it's a small item, but I think we've got to be very, very careful concerning the earthquake aspects, because I wanted, I'm a member of the South Pasadena DAG, and at one of the consolidated meetings of the DAG, one of the geologists from Sacramento indicated, and I can't go into the technical details of it, not having a good background on that, but that there'd be a very serious aspect because of the fact that Pasadena is higher in elevation than we are, and if there was any kind of a major fault or a major tremor or a major earthquake in this area, that there would be a drop down in this area of about least at nine, nine to ten feet, which would be a serious consideration. So I think that has to be very, very carefully thought out, and we do have all the resources, I would believe, of Caltech to make it, to make a better determination of that, and to determine that that is a satisfactory aspect. But I think we should give this more consideration before there's any kind of a motion that would indicate a favorable aspect right at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have perhaps two, I don't really want to spend too much more time on this agenda item tonight, can I have perhaps two quick responses to, I think, two important things that came up? The response to the possibility of vacating the current freeway plan and going from scratch on a tunnel idea? And number two, your intentions towards San Marino as far as communication and what's your ideas or responses to their concerns that were here tonight?
El Surino.
El Surino, yeah.
San Marino.
Did I say San Marino?
San Marino.
Anyway. San Marino. If you could keep them short.
Mayor Knapp, the, the issue of El Surino, first of all, the, the, that portion of the, of the route would be treated the same way as would the Alhambra, Pasadena, and South Pass. And then there's the issue of the interchange, and as Roger Snobel indicated, the issue of whether or not that interchange remains in the project is one of the items that we would in fact continue to discuss with the community. Secondly, we're not here suggesting that a tunnel is a substitute for the current project. We're here to say, is this community, and we're not asking for support, or whether you favor the alternative. We're, we're here tonight to ask whether or not the community will work with us to explore the issue, have the kinds of hearings, and further deliberations in the community so that a, an informed and technical judgment can be made. This is a napkin-based concept, it's not a proposal. It's an idea that we think technically has merit, and we're simply here to ask whether or not the community, not to support, not to favor, but whether you will work with us to explore whether or not, at some point in time, this could become a substitute. But at this point in time, the vacating and the, the modification is not really a proposal that we're making, and nor do we have the authority. Neither Roger nor I can stand before you tonight and say, and furthermore, Caltrans, who's also part of the transportation community, that agreement has not been reached among the agencies. But the issues that you've raised tonight, the technical issues, the community impact issues, are issues that we recognize are real. The issue of what is the transportation solution to the growth, development, and transportation, and environmental issues, this isn't going to solve all of those, so we're just here to ask, does this community want to work with us?
Thank you. Ms. Lo, do you have anything to add?
This is just something that I think has been long overdue in terms of just having this open discussion. I know that we have been bottled up with lawsuits and other kinds of issues, impasse issues, and I, I just wanted to make, you know, this was an altern, this was an option that was presented to me. My role was to kind of facilitate an open forum, to get community input, council input. It was not meant to disregard El Surino or what we do in Pasadena, but it was just, just to hear what's going on in the hearts and minds of folks in South Pasadena. You brought up lots of good issues. I hope that Mr. Snobel and Mr. Bazano listened very hard to this community, and if indeed they move forward, that they, they need to know that we're all involved and we have to be informed and participate every step of the way. And I, I thought there were some good suggestions here about if indeed there was a need to mitigate some of the trust that does not exist between this community and Caltrans, there's a whole lit, a whole list of things that I know we at the state could work on. So this is just the beginning, hopefully, if it is, or maybe the end. I don't know what, know what, what you want to do about this, but it was just an idea that was presented, so we, so I thought we'd give this opportunity for the community to hear about it.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I just say one thing? This is not a typical approach to a project, and I think there's a long history to this situation. We are honestly trying to find some kind of solution, but we need to figure out a, a way that we can get people together to talk about it, to come up with what the concerns are, and how we might mitigate those concerns, and how, how we might come to some kind of agreement on how to proceed. And frankly, I'm just looking, looking and asking for help on how we, how we even proceed with the process, because there's a lot of people who have an interest in this project, and there's a lot of people that want to be at the table. So it's, it's not our typical kind of thing that we've ever done before, and I, I think that's why we're here, is to start some dialogue about how we can proceed, and if this, like as we said to begin with, if this is an idea that we should be talking about, then how do we go about talking about it in a, in a productive manner? If it's just not something that can be done, then, then let us know, and we, that, that'll be it. So I think we're just looking for help on it, because we don't have the answers.
The council members, some comment, Anthony? We have a, we can make a statement, I guess, if you wish, or just receive and file.
We have some comments, I'm not sure, I don't want to make, I agree with Dick, I don't want to make any motions, but we, we each make comments very short, or is it?
Sure.
Do you want to?
Go ahead.
Well, I'm, I'm very intrigued and curious by this project, too. I want to thank Carol Mark and, and Roger and Bill for showing, your courage showing up tonight against, with a crowd like this. I mean, you know how much we care about our community, and this fight's been going on for twenty-five years, forty years. All of us, I know in the council, share the concerns of all the residents here, residents of South Pasadena and El Surino, especially regarding trust. And Bill knows, I've worked at Caltrans for ten years with Bill, we know how difficult it is sometimes to turn institutional memory, institutional habits and ways of doing business. It's like a large ship, it takes a while to turn. So there aren't legitimate concerns about trust with Caltrans and other agencies. Suggestion by Don Jones about a special master looking over all these agreements, all these concerns that were, were identified tonight, I know you're, you're listening to, and when you go to Alhambra, and you go to Monterey Park, and they're saying, push, push something through because our roads are, are congested, all the freeway, all the traffic's getting off and going on our roads. So you can hear three, three different stories, so I appreciate this, and we're looking at the bigger picture here. And you're smart, all the communities want to be at the table from the very beginning, as again, people from El Surino said. I agree particularly with Frank Cordenas, who spoke earlier, ex-employee at MTA. Frank said this could be a historic moment. For years, our city has been spending hundreds of thousands of dollars fighting a freeway. We're going to continue that fight, we'll never stop the fight. But if there's an opportunity now in history, at this moment, to do something, to look at another, another paradigm, another model, another way of alternative transportation, not a, not a, a regular freeway, a surface freeway, but something else, this may be that moment. The reasons are, here's why it's so intriguing, and just look at this, this gentleman said from Pasadena ten years ago. It will address all the Monterey Parks, Alhambra's concerns about traffic, preservation of our trees, our, our houses, our communities, our open space, possibly, as Don mentioned, thirty to forty acres right there between Valley and Mission for a park for neighbors. That community needs open space, soccer fields, baseball fields, softball fields, open space natural park. What about the financial aspect to all of our communities? Monterey Park, Alhambra, South Pasadena, El Surino, no longer fighting, but working together on common solutions to transportation problems. This is only one of them. What about all those homes that we can put back on the tax rolls in El Surino for Los Angeles? All those that we put back in South Pasadena, in Pasadena? To the state budget, which is thirty billion dollars plus in a deficit, we put all those homes that have been off for forty years back on the tax rolls, back to people who want to buy them, keep the Roberto bill, buy them. Let's put that back, another benefit. Employment opportunities for people, improving relationships between the cities, traffic safety issues, you know, there's, again, many safety issues with tunnels, but sometimes in the rain, when it's raining out there, you know, traffic, accidents increase like fifty percent. In a tunnel, that might be one of the benefits, because it's not raining, so that might be a positive. We will always work with El Surino as our partner, hand-in-hand all the time, Don, we will never let you go, you're our partner all the time. So I think we should at least be a participant in this endeavor, and from the very beginning, with El Surino, with Pasadena, with Monterey Park, and with Alhambra, and not take any position, but let's see what happens. Let's be open, because as Frank said, if we don't, the only other option is keep fighting this, keep spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, and what happens? We may win, we may not. I'm not sure if I want to take that risk, for his kids, for my kids someday.
To save time, you want to make a comment, or?
I always want to talk about all pass.
Well, I was going to say, to save time, I was going to make a statement to see if we had consensus on it.
I'd like to make a comment first.
Okay, go ahead.
But I assure you, it'll be very brief. I want to follow Mike's comments and thanking you all for coming in, and Carol, for putting this together and, and bringing this out to the open so everybody can understand what the concept is and have a chance to hear it from, for themselves. I think it probably comes as, as no big surprise that if there's anything that would come forth from the city's perspective that would be detrimental to our position against the seven-ten freeway, it's a non-starter for us. So if that can be assured, I don't see that there's any difficulty in allowing you, with our blessings, to go ahead and research the possibilities and the feasibilities and the economics of a tunnel, and focus on ways in which a tunnel, the challenges associated with a tunnel would be mitigated. But again, under the proviso that it does nothing to detrimentally impact our position within the seven-ten litigation.
Okay, now I want to say something, because he got to. I want to answer the basic question that we were posed, is will you be willing to work with us? South Pasadena has always been willing to work with Caltrans. We have sat down innumerable times at, at many different tables and many different venues, and I have been one of those people that have been to Sacramento with, with Mr. Esperanza, Mr. Jones, several times on various seven-ten bills that we, that we have addressed. So this city is, is prepared to work with Caltrans, we have an open mind, but I got to say, I'm, I'm on, on board with Mr. Richards on this one, and I'm not prepared to change our city's position at this time, but as we have always had, I have an open mind, and I'd like to see where this thing goes. And I also need to commend our assemblywoman for thinking outside of the box and coming forth with some proposals that will at least generate some discussion that, that I hope will take place over the next few months.
Mr. Mayor, I think any city council of any city has a responsibility to listen to anything or anybody that comes before. I don't think any council should say, no, we're not going to listen to it, no, we're not even going to think about it at all. I think that's wrong. So I, I advocate that we do not take any action, but we listen, we simply listen at this point.
Well, see if this statement wraps things up. As people have said, we have no authority to oppose you anyway, if you can convince your bosses to give you the money to do what you want to do. So in that sense, the city council does not oppose sound research of a bored tunnel alternative to the construction of a surface freeway in the proposed Route seven-ten corridor. The city council's ultimate position on a bored tunnel The city council's ultimate position on a bored tunnel alternative will depend on the integrity of the research to enable assessment of the alternative's benefits and costs, both social and fiscal, of this bored tunnel, with the effects of which the bored tunnel might produce. I mean, is that sufficient? Was everybody?
I would just add that the proviso predicated upon the fact that such a motion or a statement does nothing to compromise the litigation in place.
We did check with our city attorney, our freeway attorney, and any support for research of a bored tunnel would not jeopardize our current litigation that's in court. So, and of course, my second statement, our ultimate position, we're not waiving any of our future rights, in other words.
So what it boils down to basically is we're listening, correct?
It's another way of saying it.
That's what we're going to do, is listen, okay? I just want to make.
Okay.
I wish 40 years ago, Caltrans had came to us and said, "What do you think about this freeway?" Gave us the hands up or down on that 40 years ago.
Does that satisfy your need here tonight?
I think that's.
Okay.
That would give us the basis to work with.
Yes, okay, thank you.
So you'll keep a surprise of the ongoing developments, you'll meet with other cities and what's going on, or just?
Yes, I'll keep a very close contact with Mr. Joyce on the whole process. You may ask for his assistance and information and things like that as well, but if that's suitable, we'll go through his office.
Okay.
You want to just make sure that that's a unanimous?
Well, I asked for consent, since I thought I had it. Do I have consensus on that statement?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Just one last thing, we will, now that we are more or less public about this, we are going to be meeting with the other cities involved, and we'll keep you informed.
Okay, please, yes.